... is this week, the seasons.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, July 7th. It is 7:00 and we are opening our regular council meeting today. And I will start with John Weber leading this pledge. John?
Could you please stand? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, John.
I would like to take item C, the Main Street Rodeo Drive Lot Line Adjustment, off of the agenda, but I would still like to hear from Mike Ray and anybody else with the city.
Okay. Bill, I'll let you and Les comment on this.
Do you want to motion to pass the rest of it?
Yeah, well, yeah, it'd be fine if somebody makes a-
That needs to be voted-
I'd make the motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda.
Hold on a second. Okay, so the rest of the consent agenda with items-
Items A and B.
C being pulled, motion by Tom, second by Dan. We'll start with the rule from Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, so C is pulled for discussion. John, you want to tell them what you'd like to discuss on that?
Well, what I would like to, since ITD, have they responded yet to the traffic study that was done?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Weber, yes, they have. They received the traffic study last week, as did the city, and we've already received responses back from ITD, so they turned it around in three or four days.
They did?
They have, yes.
Okay.
And they have a number of comments on the study that they feel need to be addressed. They felt there were some issues that were not adequately approached and some questions about the addition of some of the manuals that were being used, some of the changes in the warrants and rules that came along with that. So, yes, they have responded and they do have comments back to us, which we, I believe, have conveyed or are about to convey back to the applicant.
Gary, did you have a comment you wanted to make on that?
Yeah, the only comment I would make is that when this was seen by Public Works Finance Committee, at that time, the applicants came forward on the lot division request. Mike Ray from Community Development was handling it at that time and indicated that they did not feel that ITD, or at least they were concerned that ITD would not give an approval of the traffic study in time for the discussion of the lot division and also, which leads to the issuance of the building permit. So, at that time, committee discussed it. There was a question as to whether or not our Public Works Director could review the traffic study ahead of time and make comments about it, which Les said, of course, well, he could look at it, but ITD needed to approve it. At that time, the applicant was, again, concerned that they would not get, meet the conditions of the development agreement or the conditions of the lot division, so wanted to be able to bring that to council in the regular agenda. At that time, the direction was to proceed in hopes that ITD would be able to give their approval prior to this meeting tonight. That has not occurred, although they have made comments on it. My understanding is that the applicant would like the ability to address the council on the removal of the condition of the lot division, the condition of an approved traffic study by ITD as a condition of the lot division approval. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor.
Bill's giving me a quizzical look.
Walter's got a question he wants to ask while we're waiting for this. What do you want, Walter?
For anyone on the staff, could you refresh my memory on the history of the ITD traffic study, how it fits into all of this, when it occurred, what the requirements are, please?
I think I can probably do that. When the original subdivision development occurred back in about 2000, 2001 timeframe, part of the process was that the city had to apply to ITD for a new street intersection with US 95, that being Rodeo Drive. And ITD approved that with the conditions that if a time was reached that a traffic signal or other such improvements were required to allow traffic to flow appropriately at that intersection, that the city be responsible for installing those facilities, not ITD. With the subdivision, there was also then a development agreement between the city and the developer that stated that if improvements were required, as determined by a traffic study, that the developer would take on that responsibility on behalf of the city to install those improvements, traffic signal, additional lanes, whatever it might be. So, there have actually been two development agreements that have occurred over the years that address that issue, that indicate that as development occurred on specifically Lot 1, Block 1, by that time, there would be a traffic study completed and that it would have to be approved by ITD prior to the issuance of any building permits on that portion of the subdivision. Now, the city has subsequently allowed some development on Lot 1, Block 1, such as the most recent duplex development that's over on Jefferson Street, on the east side of this area. So, at this point, there are development agreements in place that state that the developer will perform a traffic engineering study to assess the impacts of the entire subdivision, not just what we're talking about right now, but the entire subdivision dating back to 2000, early 2000s, and that any mitigation that was necessary, as determined by that traffic study approved by ITD, would be borne by the developer. So, that-
Go ahead.
-set of development agreements is still in place today. And then, with the lot division process that we're discussing last week and this week, one of the conditions that was recommended be placed upon the lot division was that that traffic study be completed in conformance with that development agreement with the approval by ITD prior to issuance of building permits. That's the one clause, as I understand it, that the applicants have concern about, was that whether or not that would slow them down. What we've seen since that time is that ITD's been very responsive, turning it around in less than a week. They do have comments, as will the city, and that process will continue. What the recommendation I made last week at committee was that, actually, two weeks ago now, excuse me, was that our history with ITD is that they were very responsive on these types of study reviews. We expected them to turn it around quickly, which turns out they have done, and that we just suggested letting this run its course, because we have not yet received any applications for a building on this parcel that's being created, and that will take time to get through a building permit process. It's pretty likely that concurrently running with that, the traffic study would be completed in a timely manner. If that was not the case, and we found that the study was slowing it down to the point that it would create a problem with the building permit advancing, then recommended that the council reconsider or readdress that topic at that time. Right now, we're at the point that ITD's been responsive, and at least for me, my recommendation is that we continue down that course that I suggested two weeks ago, which is let it run and let the process continue to go until we encounter a problem, and then we can readdress it if need.
Gary's got a question. You want to insert something?
Okay, so Les, if I, so you're saying that the condition could be removed on the lot division process and addressed at the time a building permit were due to be issued?
It could be addressed, yes. It could be taken off the lot division process, because it's already in the development agreement and will remain there unless the council chooses to modify the development agreement. So, that condition is still there, and it still says that before building permits are issued, approval of the traffic study is necessary.
So, for council edification, how long do we expect a building permit process to take?
For that, I would refer to our Community Development.
So, from the time receipt of the plans, the initial review would be completed within 10 business days, depending upon the number of corrections and the time that would take for us to get a resubmission in response to those corrections. Typically, that process takes another seven to 10 days. So, we, you know, generally, it's about a 30-day process, sometimes a little bit less from that initial submission. We have not yet received any building plans for the project as of today, to my knowledge.
Gary, I'll get back to John.
So, at this point, if the council were to remove it as a condition of the lot division process and approve the lot division tonight, there would be time in your estimation to, that we could expect that we would likely see the traffic study approved through ITD?
I guess the one thing I'd comment is the recommended condition was that they complete the traffic study prior to the issuance of building permits.
Okay.
It is the exact same language that's in the development agreement, so they're removing the condition from the lot division has no effect unless you're going to modify the development agreement to remove that.
I'll go back to Gary.
Now, if the council recalls, some time ago, the same developer came in and requested that the easternmost part of the large lot could be, I guess, rezoned, correct? Am I correct? Was that where the duplex lots were, that was rezoned, correct?
Correct. As part of the replant, the single lot was divided into seven lots, the six residential lots with zoning change on the eastern boundary of the site, and then you had the remainder of Lot 1 of Block 1. There was a subsequent lot line adjustment with Moscow Building Supply for the southern portion of the site, and then the lot division for the original Mineki lot that was now being adjusted through this lot line adjustment.
And the council at that time then modified the development agreement to allow development of those duplex lots and not require a traffic study prior to the development of the duplex lots. So, I think what staff is saying at this time is that you could approve the lot line adjustment as it is worded in the agenda tonight, and then, in the meantime, prior to the issuance of the building permit, if the traffic study is not completed at that time, then the council could review the development agreement and direct that, if the council in its discretion wanted to, to modify the development agreement to allow the building permit to be issued on this lot prior to the traffic study being completed, which is the same process the council followed with the duplex lots on the east side.
John, I'll go to John, then I'm going to come back to Walter.
So, it appears to me that we've got two parts of a development agreement, both of which say the developers are going to be responsible for putting in a traffic signal or whatever if that is what comes about. And since we've already got two that say, two pieces of paper that say that they're going to have to shoulder the cost one way or the other, the city will not have to, then to me, it doesn't seem to be a big stretch to do exactly what we did with the duplexes and issue the building permit without the information coming back from ITD, because regardless of whatever that information is, the developers are still going to be responsible for putting in whatever traffic slowing, calming revisions are required. Is that correct?
I think you meant lot line adjustment.
Gary?
Pardon me? I think you meant lot line adjustment. You said building permit.
No, I don't mean lot line. I think the lot line adjustment, we should be able to take the agreement statements, sentences out, do the lot line adjustment, and then issue the building permits, because the city has already got the developer on the hook for whatever needs to be done in the future. And if the developer is concerned at this point that the process is taking too long, which I think is the concern of the developer, then I think since the city is not going to be in any way, going to be harmed financially or any other way, then I think we could do that, get the process moving, and then when the city has its say over the traffic study and the ITD has its say over the traffic study, and then they sit down and work out a deal, then we move ahead with that. But at the same time, we have given the developer or the buyer of the property a building permit so they can start the process of getting their business up and running, and I don't know if that makes any sense to anyone other than me.
I'll let Gary answer that.
Well, the building permit, as Bill indicated, need, there need to be plans submitted, those plans need to be reviewed, probably sent back for modifications, and then reviewed again before the building permit is issued, a period of approximately 30 days. I think we're getting into an issue here, is that last time this happened, it came through as a modification of the development agreement. Here, it's being taught, being tied to a lot line adjustment. So, perhaps this could be handled by, the council could approve the lot line adjustment as presented, direct staff, if you desire to allow this property to develop prior to the traffic study being completed, we could bring it back to you at committee, and that would, could be done well in advance of the building permit being approved, I'm assuming, or the plans being reviewed and-
Because there is no building permit at this point in time.
To be issued at this point in-
Walter had a follow-up question.
So, Gary, your comment just now is, it was a recommendation, approve the item as presented to us, because you don't see a timing issue at this time?
No. Yes, that's my recommendation, although you might want to hear from the applicant on that issue.
Let's get the applicant up here and hear from the applicant then. Please state your name and address, if you would, please.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Shelley Bennett, 2279 Moser Court, Moscow. The challenge that we're dealing with is not the eventual building permit, it's the planning for the building permit, that the buyer doesn't want to invest money without knowing that that lot's going to be available for his use. And so, if we keep pushing it back, waiting for somebody to turn in an application, well, they can't until they know if they have a lot. So, that's the challenge. We're pushing a business away when we should be helping them. So, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Becker with Hodgins Associates, 405 South Washington. I just want to make a couple other points. Since the time of the ITD agreement, there has been a turn lane or, that extends past rodeo, and a dedicated left turn or middle turn lane on that road that was developed that wasn't part of that agreement. So, it does alleviate some of the traffic pressures in that area. I know the traffic impact study will take a little bit of back and forth. There were some comments from ITD, and they were preliminary, is what the comments that I was sent was preliminary, and some of the assumptions they made were, in my opinion, incorrect. So, I would like to, the time to back and forth and get that worked out correctly, so that it can be a win-win for everybody. So, you know, if that impact study hinges on this, you know, this development, then, you know, it might scuttle this sale, and, you know, then we've lost another business in town.
Thank you. So, I'm going to go to Tom, then I'm going to go to Wayne.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be clear about the timing of the various pieces here. So, the staff recommendation that exists within our packet says that we should have a condition that at the time of the lot line adjustment, we should be requesting. But that's not the case? Okay, so, and because Gary's current recommendation is now that we can just allow that to take place naturally because of the development agreement that already has that condition within it. That's my understanding of what's currently being said, right? Because the building permit, when a building permit is requested, it would trigger that as per the development agreement.
Bill, you want to answer that?
I think, I think that's correct. I understand that the development agreement covers all of the property, all the remainder of Lot 1 of Block 1.
Okay, so my only concern then, and I get the timing thing, I want to make sure that this can move forward, you know, as it should, is if the recommend, you know, there is some impact on where the driveway is to get into this new business that might take place in this location, and that affects, you know, that's affect, you know, that affects the traffic, that affects, the traffic affects where that might go. If the design for the building and for the access doesn't take into account what ITD needs for accessing the highway, then I'm concerned that that's going to create additional slowdowns.
In the review?
In the, yes, I guess in the process of the review. Let's say the developer has this really great idea to access this one way, and then, and they come forward, and then ITD says, wait a minute, we can't allow that to happen. Is that, I mean, is that not a concern? I mean, it seems like we can be, we'd be fine allowing it to go forward as the recommendation is, but the process of getting the highway review or the ITD review could further delay it.
Bill?
I'm going to go to Wayne. Wayne's got, he had a question. John, then I'll come back.
Well, I guess I wanted to-
You want an answer?
I just, yeah, I'm trying to get an answer to this question of the timing.
The entrance egress is not on 95.
Okay, so, as long as there's already a stated, no egress on 95, then it's probably not an issue.
Correct. There would be no access onto 95, with the exception of the 16-foot wide skewed driveway. The access onto rodeo was set some distance back, and none of the review comments from ITD related to the location of that access point as, in relationship to the location of the intersection. So, the proximity of that access point and intersection was not a concern.
Okay, then I'm not-
The concerns were, were some of the assumptions-
That addresses my concern.
Trip distributions, whether actual turning counts were, turning movements were counted in the field, there were more of the traffic study, not necessarily the location of the access point. So, I don't know that that-
Great, all right. That's fine. Then I'm, then I'm good.
Wayne?
Go ahead and let Gary make his comment. Then I will.
So, I guess if I could ask the applicant a question. Knowing that the development agreement and a building permit request triggers the traffic study-
Correct.
-is approval of the lot division tonight, without the condition, sufficient to meet the timeframe that you're desiring to change tonight?
I'm concerned that there would be a lag time somewhere along the way, that it might cause a problem.
Okay, but if tonight, the council were to say, we remove that condition, the lot division is approved, does that meet your immediate needs?
Yes.
And if the council would like staff to bring a modification of the development agreement, council could so direct, and we could bring that to committee?
Yes.
Bill?
The key is being able to get them in the position to submit for the building permit. So, if we can do that without telling them, you've got this lot, IDT's going to come up with some recommendations. There's so few trips that are going to be generated by this new customer that this isn't going to trigger it. The traffic study includes a projection of everything that could be there. So, there's time to be able to fit that. It works as long as we can tell them they have a lot to buy, and they can submit for a building permit, and it can be approved without the study being completed.
That's different. Okay. So, I think what the council could do tonight is to remove the condition, if the council so desired, the lot division could be approved tonight without that condition. The condition, however, continues, because it is in the development agreement-
Right.
-which is a separate issue. Council could direct staff to bring, if the council would like, we could bring modifications similar to those made in the development agreement for the eastern duplex lots for consideration by the council at Public Works Finance.
We're good? Okay, Dan?
Well, I mean, a traffic study's already been begun, submitted, we're just hashing back and forth on approval stuff, according to Scott. I think that, I don't even know if we need to bring back the development agreement at this time, because, like they say, they just need a lot, you know, they need something to sell. So, with that, I would make a motion that we approve the lot line adjustment request and eliminate that condition, and everything else stays the same right now, as far as the development agreement with the rest of the property, because, you know, we'll, we'll just have to wait and see what happens. They're going to apply for a building permit, along with, while this transportation study's moving forward, so-
I'll second that.
We'll see what happens when that happens, and if they have, if there's a problem, they'll come back. I mean, you, there's a 30-day process for building permit. We got two committee meetings in that time, so, and a council meeting in between, so there's, there's time for us to take action in that interim if something comes up.
Well, okay, we hear, we got a motion on the floor, made by Dan, to approve this without the ITD, so that the guy can get the building permit process going. It was seconded by Tom. Wayne had something he wanted to throw out here. Were you done?
I'm now.
You can go.
No, never mind.
Need further discussion? Bill, you got a question, your point?
Yeah, just to clarify, if the development agreement isn't modified, the traffic study is still required before permits are issued. So, if you want the lot to be fully available for a building permit, then I think you need to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the development agreement to come back to committee next week, just removing-
Okay, I'm picking up what you're putting down then. But I will, if it's okay with the second, or we'll go ahead and-
If I may, I would not put that in the motion. You can direct staff, after the motion's been voted on, direct staff, and we will bring that modification for your consideration as directed.
Okay.
Okay. We're going to start with the rule with-
Question, please.
Okay.
With, if this passes, is the developer going to continue to work on the traffic study, or does that stop?
If this passes, that obligation still remains in the development agreement, and it runs with the land.
I understand, but it also was in place back when you did the duplex lots, and we left that slide.
It was-
We did not put this requirement on the first lot division that's now being shifted. I, I, I just hate to see a started traffic study that's been to ITD, had comments, that the engineer says is going to do some ping ponging before everybody gets in agreement. I'd personally hate to see that dropped.
Tom?
I think, I think the concern that I have is that if we isolate traffic studies to just this one square or this one-
It's not, it's for the entire property.
Right, and that's what's important. I think we look at the whole thing, and that's what we need to see. Because we've let it slip in the past, as Walter said, so I just want to make sure we're not going to let it-
I mean, I can agree to this, if I'm, I can agree to this motion if I feel comfortable that the traffic study work will continue.
And I'll tell you that the owner of the property intends to finish the traffic study, so-
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we're ready for a vote on this thing? I'll start with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, it passed, six to zeros.
We need staff direction.
Yeah, we need Dan. You want to tell them what you want to do here?
Come back next week with modifications to Public Works Finance.
If you need to.
And I would note as well, that as the council, or committee considers that next week, the committee can, and subsequently, the council can make sure that the traffic study is completed during that time.
Okay, I think we're good to go, huh?
Well, one comment there.
You have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that in our direction to staff for the modification of the development agreement, that we make sure that the can does not continue to be kicked down the road, and because this traffic study's got to be done, and piecemeal development cannot continue without the study being finished eventually. And so far, the city's lever has been withholding the development permit. So far, so good, but I don't want to see it going too much further down the road than this, because this will be the second time we've punted down the road, and it has got to stop.
Well, staff's got direction, and it's going to be coming forward, Art, to committee. So, let's move on, folks. Item number two is staff recognition report. Gary Reedner?
No report tonight, Your Honor.
Okay. Number three is public comment, time for 15 minutes, and this is for members of the public that would like to spink, speak on something, not matters that are coming before us tonight, however, so that'd be something that's not in front of Board of Adjustment, not in front of P&amp;Z, and not on tonight's agenda. So, I see Nils Peterson, so Nils?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nils Peterson, 841 Trevoy. Let me read this. It started out to be 600 words long to go to the Daily News. It started out to be 600 words long to go to the Daily News.
I'll give you three minutes, Nils.
Count the three minutes or the 600 words, whichever you like. On March 10, Keegan Caldwell, the city's sustainability intern, reported to the admin committee on his efforts to establish a baseline for the city's greenhouse gas emissions as part of Resolution 2010-18 that committed the city to a 20% reduction below 2005 greenhouse gas emissions by the year 2020. One element of Caldwell's report looked at sectors of the city's greenhouse gas emissions, buildings, vehicle fleet, et cetera. He reported that the electricity needed to pump water and treat sewage accounts for 43% of the city's emissions. Caldwell noted two things. First, he said there was not much room for improved efficiency in this area. The pumps and other equipment needed were already efficient. Second, he noted that since the greenhouse gas emissions for water sewer are a large fraction of the total, making the 20% reduction citywide would require proportionally more reductions from other sectors. Caldwell's analysis is based on EPA-designated Pacific Northwest regional fuel mix for producing electricity. The mix contains both coal and natural gas. His analysis is based on a regional average of 900 pounds of CO2 released per megawatt hour of electricity generated. According to NRDC report, Avista's 2012 power is cleaner than the regional average, just under 600 pounds of carbon dioxide per megawatt. So that would adjust, if we really were more specific, it would adjust Caldwell's numbers down a bit, but it would adjust all of them down a bit. As a residential customer of Avista, I can use the Buck a Block program and pay a small premium to purchase electricity for my home produced from wind. The result is the electricity I'm buying has no greenhouse gas emissions. On June 24, I saw a story where American University and George Washington University have signed a 20-year power purchase agreement with Duke Energy to purchase more than half of their power from three new solar farms in, in North Carolina. The universities believe they will save money over the life of the contract. I presume the city could approach Avista and contract purchase some or all of its electricity from sources that do not produce greenhouse gas emissions. I want to urge the council to consider addressing its greenhouse gas emissions goal by purchasing clean electricity. Caldwell also made a passing suggestion that the city take most of the water sewer greenhouse gas emissions off its books by assigning them to its customers. That led me to consider what I could do to cut 20% of the greenhouse gas emissions associated with my water sewer use. The simple strategy I could adopt is conservation. If I were to use 20% less water and sewer, I would be responsible for 20% less emissions. The simple way to do that is with a more efficient toilet because toilets are both major water users and major sewer producers. A low-flow toilet uses 1.6 gallons versus 3.5 gallons of older designs, a 50% reduction. I want to urge the council to establish a toilet exchange program. It would conserve water, it would also reduce the city's greenhouse gas emissions associated with both water and sewer operations. My fundamental concern is that the city has ostensibly been working on reducing its greenhouse gas emissions since passing the resolution in 2010. Caldwell reported some progress has been made with the EcoDriver program, but mostly he reported on collecting baseline data, which the ICLEI process he's using has as the first of five steps. It's now 2014. There are five budget years remaining before 2020, your deadline. Purchasing clean electricity and making toilets more efficient are low-hanging fruit, either of which might allow the city to meet its emissions goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
I make it? I remember reading this somewhere.
Thank you, Neil. Other comments from other folks?
Just one. Did you look at scenes that the city doesn't make money out of thin air? Were the city to buy its energy with the additional surcharge to make sure it was non-carbon-producing, how much would that cost the city to transfer to that? Because, you know-
Well, I'm hoping you would ask staff that question since I don't know how much energy the city consumes. It wasn't in Caldwell's report.
So how much extra do you pay, for example, and probably different for the city?
I pay $1 for 300 kilowatts. That's what a block is. But my reason for mentioning the Duke, or the American University example is by doing a long-term contract rather than doing a consumer kind of arrangement, they do it month by month. By cementing some longer-term deal, those universities think they've actually saved money on their power bill because they were able to lock in a rate. I think it's in anticipation that otherwise rates will rise of carbon-generated electricity. So staff would do more than just answer the buck-a-block equation. They might answer whether they thought Avista would actually agree to some other kind of contract arrangement.
Anybody else have questions for Nils before we move on? You got one?
Yeah, I've got one. Nils, with the very bulk of our, our energy comes from hydroelectric power, what's the carbon footprint on that?
So the NRDC report says that Avista's power production contains some amount of coal and some amount of natural gas. It's not all clean.
But do you know the percentage?
And it's 600 pounds per milliwatt hour, or megawatt hour created. So I don't know what the percentage is, but it, it's a, it's a footprint, there's a factor in it. So it's something to, to buy your way out of, one way or another. My point is that of all of the ways for you to get, to meet your goal-
Thank you, Nils.
-that may be the simplest.
We're going to move on. Other folks like to come up and give us comments? Do you have a comment period? Thank you, we'll move on then to number four, which is a citizen commission report by Les McDonald.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My portion in this report is actually very brief because I am here to introduce the chair of the Transportation Commission. This is the evening for Transportation to provide a report to the council on their activities. And after a three-year period of Nancy Nelson as the chair, we have a new chair this year, a new member at the helm, which is Chair Don Meyer. So he's going to tell you a bit about what Transportation's been up to and where we're heading. Don?
Don Meyer, 1018 Alturas Drive, Moscow. Mayor Lambert and members of the council, I'm pleased to be here this evening to report on the accomplishments of the Transportation Commission this, last year. We continue to strive to fulfill our mandate to advise and recommend actions to the council concerning transportation issues in Moscow. First item I have is Moscow on the Move Transportation Program. That was a study that Nelson Igar did and their initial milestones were to develop a set of visionary and achievable transportation principles and objectives that will guide investment, management, and operation of Moscow's local transportation systems. One element of the study was greenwalks and the first of these is currently being built on the University of Idaho campus on Deacon Street in front of the sub and the bookstore. The purpose of the greenwalks is to funnel student pedestrian traffic into the crosswalks for safer crossings and by incorporating greenery and traffic calming measures into the design. And these are going to continue to be used. There's another one scheduled, as you probably know, to be used on Sixth Street over by the Living and Learning Center and that crossing. Next item is the replat of Indian Hills, number six. The developer sent a request for a replat to the projected park in the development at the corner of Aponee Street and Blaine Street. The developer proposed adding two additional lots to the proposed park. One lot would be purchased by the city and the other would be donated by the developer as well as vacating path easements to the park across existing lots on Alturas Drive. The commission recommended approval of the replat to council as we felt easements on Alturas lots were not necessary because of better access with the addition, better street access with the addition of the two additional lots. Also, the commission would like to see a standard toolbox of traffic, traffic calming devices implemented to be used in future transportation development. These would include greenwalks and roundabouts, both full-size and mini, which, for instance, could be used in something like the development of the Third Street bridge crossing to finish off Third Street to make for safer pedestrian use and addressing residential concerns about And the, the greenwalks would, and the combination with the circles would slow down traffic and also make for safer crossings for pedestrian traffic in the area. We also revisited the primary plat for Ridgeview 2, focusing on on-street parking and bike lanes. We continued this year to identify sidewalks and curbs within the city that were not ADA compliant in our continuing efforts to make the city more handicap accessible. This could also apply, we feel, to vegetation management in some areas of the city. We have noticed some areas where overhanging trees and shrubbery can create access problems for individuals in wheelchairs or with other handicaps. These areas need to be reevaluated on an ongoing basis. We also continued to study, study safe bike routes in an ongoing manner this year and have, for the most part, identified what we feel are the safest routes for cyclists to use. We will continue to reevaluate these routes as city growth continues. Another topic that came up for discussion this year was bike riding on sidewalks in the downtown corridor. This issue came from last year's city survey as citizens were concerned about the potential for accidents between pedestrians and cyclists in the downtown corridor. We identified the area between First and Sixth Streets as the most, area most affected. We did not feel it was necessary to implement an ordinance to solve this problem, but instead to implement measures encouraging cyclists to voluntarily comply with a pedestrian dismount zone and walking their bicycles downtown or also implementing shows and signage identifying, identifying impacted areas and, as well as education. This plan was recommended to the council and implemented and currently seems to be working well. I would like to give special mention of Nancy Nelson's leadership and hard work on this issue. In the future, we will continue to look at traffic management, the traffic calming toolbox, uncontrolled intersections and truck routes. We will continue working on sidewalk ADA compliance and identifying safe bike routes. And that, that's my report.
Thank you, Don. And council got questions or comments for Don? Art?
Have you submitted the safe bike routes to the Paradise Path Task Force people?
They have, they have seen the maps, they've been to, to our meetings and they've also had input on that.
Cool.
Well, Don, thank you very much for that excellent report. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to item five, which is airport improvement FAA grant for the Pullman Moscow Airport. I see Tony Bean, our airport manager. Tony, would you like to come up and present here?
Mayor and council, thank you for having me. It's grant time again, I guess for this year. It's for the 2014 grant and the request is to have the sponsors of which we've had the Pullman City Council approve the authorization for Glenn Johnson, the mayor of Pullman, to sign on behalf of that sponsor and I'm coming before you to ask for the authority for Mayor Lambert to sign on behalf of the city of Moscow as our other sponsor to acquire snow-removal equipment, do terminal rehabilitation, and get a temporary structure to house that equipment with the entitlement funds that the airport has remaining left over from the last two years because moving into the runway, all of our entitlement funding, which is $1 million per year, has to go to high priority work. And the high priority work will be the runway work and not equipment. And the danger of not having the equipment now is we don't have enough equipment today to be able to adequately remove snow once that new runway gets in and we'll go three years without having the equipment and that would not look very well on, on me to make sure that we have the required things that need to happen prior to moving into a potential runway realignment. The ramp, the apron ramp issue is just basically due to the weight of the aircraft. It is sinking through the pavement and we're about three inches down right now and that needs to be addressed and it's with a concrete hard stand to stay out of that issue to where we're not having aircraft rutting pavement so badly that it can't power out of the, of the apron. But the remainder of the grant funding that we have for this year is 1.863, $200 for the total project of 207, oh, excuse me, that's not quite right, the $2,070,222.22. So the request and the, the matching funding of the 207,022.22 would come from passenger facility charges at the airport generated by the airport. We're not asking for funding at this time for any of the grant, just the authority to be able to sign for the grant as a sponsor.
Thank you, Tony. Art, you got a question?
I was just going to jump right to the motion.
Oh, one over here.
God, I've got a question first.
I was going to take a motion, but if Art's going to do it, then-
Left question first.
Hang on, let's see, let's get Wayne. Wayne's got a question.
Tony, I was just going to comment on the parking apron, the money and the, the rebuilding of that is not going to be affected once we get the airport realigned, right?
Right.
We're still going to need that.
You're still going to need it, yeah. We're still, we're having issues with the Q400 and we're having issues with 737 and as the charter traffic, we start capturing back a lot of that traffic. It has to sit static, static on a hard stand and we tried to fix it with the runway overlay two years ago and they put a heavier asphalt and that doesn't fix it. Concrete's going to be the only thing that we have to be able to do that.
Okay.
Okay, Art?
Well, I would like to move to approve the preauthorization for the Moscow-Pullman Regional Airport to accept grant number 3-53-0051-40 from the Department of Transportation FAA through the AIP not to exceed the total project costs of $2,070,222.22 with federal funds of $1,863,200, requiring a match of $207,022.22 from non-city resources and for the mayor to execute the required grant award documents.
Second that.
Okay, Art made the motion to approve this grant as the conditions he set forth and Tom seconded it. I will start with you, Art.
Aye.
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 Okay, is that six to zero? Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you.
Have a nice evening, we'll move on. Let's see, item number six, proposed Moscow Code Title VII, Chapter VII, Fire Prevention and adopting International Fire Code 2009 Edition with modifications. Our acting chief, Joe, would you please come up, sir?
2012 edition.
It says 2012.
2009 on that one?
Yeah, we got different, it is 2012, but unfortunately this says 2009, so up there, down here is 2012. Okay, Joe, you have the floor, sir.
Mayor, council, thank you. I've got a brief PowerPoint I'd like to show you.
Yeah, it does, it's on the agenda.
12.
Before we get on any questions, just need to figure out how to do this. There we go. There we go. Okay, first of all, I'm here tonight asking the council to adopt the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code. I'd like to give the council a brief overview of the 2012 Fire Code, and if there's questions, we can, hopefully I can answer those about the ordinance when I'm finished with this. The International Fire Code is available for adoption and use by jurisdictions internationally. The state fire marshal adopts the International Fire Code as a minimum standard for the entire state. I don't know, some of you probably recognize that picture. The IFC, International Fire Code, sets forth minimum requirements such as maintaining life, safety of building occupants, the protection of emergency responders, and limiting the damage to a building and its contents. Many believe the International Fire Code is a maintenance document when in fact it's a design document. One cannot construct or erect any building without fire department access, water supply, and the required fire protection systems. Now, I do believe that this, the apartment fire that we had on A Street, a sprinkler system in that building would have mitigated the damage to that building in a large fashion. So, next, road access. In order to be effective, fire trucks should be able to get within 150 feet of all parts of a structure. This is based on a standard length of preconnected hoses carried on the fire trucks. And if any of you have been to a fire scene, and I know you have, you can see the space that is needed for fire trucks and personnel to operate. Water supply. A good water supply consists of an adequate source of water, which we have, distribution system and proper pressure for delivery, which we have, and if the water source were not reliable, it is not considered to be an acceptable water supply. Fire protection systems. Fire protection systems may serve one or more purposes in providing adequate protection from fire. An example is fire alarm detecting the fire or smoke detectors. It also alerts the occupants or the fire department of a fire emergency, and then sprinkler systems control the smoke and attempt to extinguish the fire. Every code cycle, there is a booklet that comes out that we subscribe to that are significant changes to that cycle of the code. And I've got a few examples of that for the council. One of these, and this is something that I would be enforcing as the fire marshal and looking at during plan reviews, and one of these is, for instance, obstructions on roofs. The intent of this change is to control conditions that can affect the safety of firefighters during firefighting operations. Now, these two firefighters are on the roof ventilating, or trying to ventilate a roof so we can get some smoke out of there, and I think Councilman Carsgalon was at that fire. The primary concern is poorly identified obstructions that can become entanglement hazards or pathways for stray current if the electrical ground is somehow compromised and the responder comes in contact with. Another significant change is the ability for the fire code official to work with the engineering staff on the design and elements of fire apparatus access road where traffic calming devices will be used. These devices have a direct impact on response times and firefighter safety in times of Another example to change, or major change to the code, is the addition of carbon monoxide alarms. Carbon monoxide alarms are now required in new existing Group I, which is institutional, and Group R occupancies, which are residents. They had not been required before. As you know...
Joe, it says for fuel-burning appliances, does that include furnaces as well?
Yes, yeah, anything that produces carbon monoxide, any gas-fired appliance. And they're also required in garages, attached garages now, that a vehicle could be running in, so. They, carbon monoxide tributes areas attributed to about 2,100 deaths annually in the United By adopting the code with its significant changes, the City of Moscow will provide a total approach of controlling hazards in all buildings and sites regardless of the hazard being indoors or outdoors. For the most part, the changes that we've made to the city code are really minor. They mirror the building code, the changes that the building code has made to the International Building Code, because the fire code and the building code are so closely related. So the changes that I'm asking in the city code really are minor changes other than the adoption of the code itself. And there are several housekeeping areas, because the 2012 Fire Code has changed a lot of sections, and we had to make sure that the city code reflected those number changes, so. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Thank you, Joe. Questions from the council to Joe?
I just was going to say that in the past week, I've had a couple of conversations with Joe about some of the solar panel pieces within the 2012 recommendations, and feel good about, you know, the result of those conversations, so.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to make the motion to move this forward, to approve the ordinance under suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and that it be read by title and published by summary.
I'll second.
Okay, Tom made the motion, seconded by Dan to approve the ordinance under the suspension of the rules requiring three complete and separate readings, and it be read by title and published by summary. Start with John.
Hi.
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 Okay, so that passes, and I will read the ordinance. Ordinance 2014-11. Okay, ordinance 2014-11, an ordinance of the City of Moscow, Idaho, a municipal corporation in the state of Idaho, providing for the amendment of Moscow City Code Title VII, Chapter VII, Fire Prevention, to adopt the 2012 Edition International Fire Code as adopted by the state fire marshal, together with amendments and revisions that are reasonably necessary to protect the health and safety of city residents, repealing all ordinance and parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, providing that the provisions of this ordinance be deemed severable, and providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from the date of its passage, approval, and publication according to law. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item seven, folks, which is the Police Basin Aquifer Committee Management Plan Update. Les McDonald will present.
Good evening again, and I wanted to be sure that you received a copy of some correspondence on this issue, and I'm not sure if it made it out to the council, so I brought copies along. I'll go ahead and disperse to you. It does appear fairly large, but a large portion of this is actually a copy of a section of the City of Pullman Conservation Plan. And that correspondence is from local resident Nancy Chaney regarding the item at hand. The Police Basin Aquifer Committee, PIBAC, as we call them, implemented and, well, developed a plan for approval back in 1992 that addressed water issues within the basin. That plan was subsequently approved by all of the entity members of PIBAC, the counties, the cities, and the universities that were members at that time. That plan has been in effect for over 20 years, and PIBAC felt it was time to provide some form of an update to the plan, and so took that on about a year and a half ago, started working its way through chapter by chapter through the plan at various meetings over that time. The committee, PIBAC, felt that it did not want to pursue the option of rewriting the plan in its entirety, and instead took the approach of creating, in essence, an addendum to the plan that essentially gave an update on the status of the items that were within the plan. In that manner, we weren't starting from scratch. It was really a kind of a check-in as to how things were proceeding, were the assumptions that were made proving out, were the efforts that were being undertaken or promoted within the groundwater plan having the effect that was anticipated, things of that nature. So PIBAC has worked its way through all the chapters of that plan and come up with updates to attach to each chapter along the way. One of those sections in the plan, the Groundwater Management Plan, included a series of action plans for each of the entities that are within PIBAC or that were part of the plan development itself. The City of Moscow, of course, has one of those, and the entities' representatives were asked to modify or update those action plans based on current conditions and situations that are facing us today as compared to 1992. So as a staff representative, I undertook that process to create a new version, or an updated version, if you will, of the 1992 action plan items for City of Moscow. And what's in your packet this evening are a couple of things. The first item you will see is a clean copy of the 2014, July 2014 Moscow Action Plan, but I would ask that you turn past that and go to the next two pages, which are a comparative version, a summary, that shows each of the bulleted items from the 1992 version, and then following that, a second version of the 2014 update. And I say second version because the first version was presented to the Public Works Finance Committee a couple of weeks ago, had some comments generated, some suggested edits generated at that meeting. Those edits have been made and are incorporated in what is now called the 2014 Version Number Two, which is what's before you this evening. I was asked to bring this through council so that council could look at the suggested changes, the 2014 version, and provide approval of that before we take it back to PIBAC to be included in the update to the 1992 Groundwater Management Plan. At committee, we went through all of the items that are here. I'm not proposing to do that this evening, but I will try to point out a couple of what I guess are perhaps the more significant items along the way. First off, I should mention that about a half a dozen of them are what I would consider to be complete. So there were tasks that essentially stated that, you know, adopt a code, or take this action, or create a plan, or a program. We've done those things, and so they're just noted as being completed, and I'm recommending that they just be deleted from the action plan because they're done, or they're just ongoing programs that will continue as a matter of course. Of the items remaining, probably the first one is the one that probably received the most discussion at PIBAC. This is the one that has to do with the 1% annual growth target and the 125% maximum production target based on the 1986 and 1981 through 85 average production numbers, respectively. The original version from '92 really was perhaps a bit more stringent in the choice of language in that second sentence that talks about it, "No time shall the accumulated total pumping exceed 125." In the modified version, and this was something that was discussed with some of the PIBAC membership, was a modification to attempt to limit the accumulated total pumping to a target of maximum of 125%. That was done in recognition of the fact that cities do grow, and the characteristics of the water producers within the basin have changed. As a collection, we have actually reduced our consumption from the 1992 levels, which is somewhat astounding when you think about it, and the type of changes that have happened in the last 22 years. Individually, though, that's not always the case. The cities, of course, have continued to increase as population increases, demand on the supply increases. The universities have gone the other direction. They've had a decline, and KCU University of Idaho, a fairly significant decline, largely due to the reuse of treated effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. That has made huge strides in their water usage and benefits the entire basin. So the language modification here was really trying to get to the issue of looking at the basin as a whole rather than tying it just to individual entities, if you will. And I think I see a question here.
Dan?
Yeah. The million gallons per year that are listed here, is that, these are just Moscow's numbers, or are these the basin's numbers?
Those are just Moscow's numbers that are listed here.
One thing about, you still have things you want to comment on, Les, before we get into discussion on this?
Well, just one or two things, if I could. One of the items that is in here, one, two, three, about four bullets down, four and five, actually, talk about conservation and conservation devices. Well, the city is doing a pretty extensive program on conservation, a lot of public outreach, education, dealing with things like zirisket gardens, demonstration gardens, helping folks with, you know, free devices, those types of things. We're also in the process of creating a conservation plan that will be coming to council yet this summer that will address, you know, a lot of what we do in conservation and propose additional steps, such as the toilet exchange program that's discussed earlier this evening, toilet rebate program. Those types of things will be in that plan under some of the proposed options that the city could consider implementing. I bring that up because in here, we're indicating that we will continue those conservation programs. I know in Ms. Chaney's letter, that was one of the items she touched on, was trying to make that program as robust as possible, providing a copy of the Pullman Conservation Section from their comp plan, you know, as support documentation to that. We did add two goals, so not just modification. One of these I had brought forward originally, which was to explore possible expansion of the wastewater treatment plant effluent reuse. That's something we've been addressing under our Phase Five Treatment Plant studies, looking at how could we expand use of that and help not only the plant, but help reduce overall water consumption for irrigation purposes. So that's the first of the added goals. And the second was added at committee, which is continued examination of an alternate water supply options as approved by the city council. That's in recognition of the surface water reservoir study and other alternate water supply options that we have been undertaking the last couple of years in our studies of possible routes forward. So I think with that, I would try to take questions.
You know, one of the things here in Moscow we can be proud of, the, I look back on the PIBAC reports, and we've done a very good job of my estimation on conservation, and that effort needs to continue, and I like this, the added goals of continued examination of alternative water supply, because someday we are going to definitely have to address it, as I see it, so. And even though this isn't a public hearing, I'm going to let council speak, but if there's any people that would like to speak on this, too, I'm going to let folks come up and talk. So Walter, you had something?
Yes, a question for staff, probably Gary. Ms. Chaney's letter's dated June the 26th. Do you know when the city received it?
I do not know. City clerk informs me that she was out of the office, received it on her cellphone, smartphone, but it wasn't...
smartphone, but it was received on the 26th, but because of circumstances, was not distributed.
It's addressed to Moscow City Council. Is there an explanation as to why we're handed it tonight, nine days after the city got it?
Can't really say, except that it was received by the city clerk. I don't know how to respond to that, other than...
Mr. Mayor, I was all prepared to work on approving this tonight, but based upon the fact that we've got a rather extensive letter with items in it that I may or may not agree with in the long run, I'm not prepared to read through these tonight and make a decision on them. I'd make a motion this item be tabled until the next council meeting, give us a chance to study this.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Walter to table this until the next council meeting, until we can, council has time to study it. Seconded by Dan, and so I will go with the rule from Art.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
No.
Okay, so you got five to one to table this thing, so it will be tabled until the next council meeting.
And I may or may not agree with the...
You're gonna do the presentation again, just like if folks that want to comment, they can comment on it at that time.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Perhaps the Public Works Finance could pick up some of these things at the next meeting and work through them. Maybe that would be helpful.
If you want.
I mean, I'm just making a suggestion that that would be...
Certainly, we can bring them through. We do have an abbreviated meeting. We only have an hour this next time, so we'll...
Sure.
We will bring that to the chair to prioritize those items.
Work some of that, either there or at the council meeting.
Okay, well, that was the last item in the agenda. We got reports to note the Administrative Committee and Public Works did not meet last week. Of course, it's been a few weeks because of the holiday, as well as a bunch of other boards and commissions. But before we, I make a motion to adjourn, or somebody makes the motion to adjourn, let's talk about reports. You got anything, Walter? You want to talk about?
You and I and Gary Reed, no, spent the day, virtually, working with the branding committee, interviewing four finalists, and you're welcome to comment on this if you wish, of course, four finalists for a consultant position to aid the city, the chamber, and the university in a branding effort. That effort today led to winnowing the four down to two this afternoon, with more information being requested, and we're proceeding with that effort. And if you have anything to add to that?
Walter, I'm gonna do my report, so I'll go on. Wayne, you got anything you want to throw in? You need a report?
Uh, let's see, the Stroke Preservation Commission met on the 26th, and they're moving forward with a really good issue on preservation Moscow for this year. And also, I'd bring to everybody's attention that the ice cream social at the McConnell Mansion will be July 27th. The other thing I wanted to mention, however, was that on June 21st through the 24th was the Entrepreneur Boot Camp, that was put on by the Police Knowledge Corridor, and it was extremely successful. Very, very good turnout from the public at that. I think we haven't seen the final financial report from PKC yet, but it came out very well in the black. They had 15 campers this year. They will move forward next year to do the same thing again, and intend to look at a larger program. But now that the, that that program is out there, both at Washington State University with their Economic Development Specialists, as well as University of Idaho, there's a lot of enthusiasm towards that program now. So, it was a good thing. It was well put on and very well received. Talked to numerous campers themselves, and one of the comments was, well, it's a little tough going from 7:30 in the morning to 9 o'clock at night, but that's why it was called a boot camp. And, but, all the comments went anywhere from being a tough boot camp to being a life-changing experience, so it was a good thing for them.
Thank you, Wayne.
Art? Yeah, a couple small items, and none of my committees actually met, but tomorrow evening at 5:30 on the southeast corner of Suite and 95, the Paradise Path Task Force will meet for a truncated meeting and a ride-around to look at areas along the Paradise Path that might need some work, and to explore some issues there. Sustainable Environment hasn't met until a week subsequent to the Paradise Path Task Force, and tomorrow morning, change in schedule is the URA at 7:00 AM right here.
Very good. Dan?
We got everything off Public Works Finance that I chaired in Walter's absence. Other than that, I skipped all my meetings last week to skip town, so thank you, Tree Commission, for meeting without me, and the rest of my commission's in later this week.
Tom?
chaired the Administrative Committee a couple of weeks ago, and all that, all those items showed up here tonight, so we didn't have anything additional. That same week, I attended a couple of presentations by the, at the Entrepreneur Boot Camp, and was equally impressed, or as impressed as I could be. I know I attended a fewer sessions than Wayne, of course, but it was, I thought it was a terrific event. I also attended the Clearwater RC&amp;D meeting in Lewiston, and the Moscow Parks and Rec Commission meeting up here, so lots of, lots of meetings. Last week, again, like Dan, had that, no meetings, had that week off, so that was nice.
Okay, John?
The only thing I had was the Human Rights Commission, and in addition to just a number of Task Force reports, two items of new business came up. One was the possibility of a class project on promotional ideas about the Human Rights Commission, and anything that may possibly have an effect on the humans rights, on the Human Rights Commission. Fairly good discussion about that, and the other one was a discussion of the right for limited carry on campus of handguns restricted to retired law enforcement people and people that have gone through the extensive training program, and there was fairly good discussion. Are there any maps? I have nothing.
Okay. Well, on June 23rd, I attended a dinner for the PKC, the Police Knowledge Corridor, and I gotta share with you, that, there was a lot of excitement, enthusiasm, some terrific speakers, and got a chance to meet with a bunch of folks in our region, you know, the Moscow Pullman, Wazoo, U of I, and that is exactly how we should be collaborating and doing things together as a group, and that was a very fine example of how that went, Wayne, so that was very well organized. And as Walter said, we nailed it down to on the branding of our city to two groups, and we'll find out here before too long who will be doing that for us, so that's kind of exciting, and we're getting closer on that. So, Gary, do you have any reports you want to...
Yes, sir, we have the Quarterly Regional Breakfast Meeting on Wednesday morning. We have a reception for the city council to meet with fire department chief candidates on Wednesday night. We also have the Idaho Transportation Board will be here on Thursday at 9:35 to tour the Intermodal Transit Center, and I believe that's about it.
You're not gonna be at that, are you, Gary?
Yes, I will be, as a matter of fact.
You are gonna make it. Okay, I heard you weren't gonna be able to.
Well, I would also note that the Quarterly Regional is 7:00 Wednesday at the University of Idaho.
And University of Idaho's presenter?
Yes. President Staben will review his first five months in office.
Very good. I would entertain a motion...
If I may appoint to Gary and Wayne, if y'all are attending the ITD board at the Transit Center, once you get through showing that off, don't forget, we've got six miles of highway that needs to be rebuilt down there, please.
We hardly let a meeting go by without mentioning that.
Don't, please don't.
We will not.
Dan?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to executive session as per Idaho Code 67-2345-1C, and we do not reconvene.
Seconded. Okay, a motion by Dan to adjourn for executive session, Code 67-2345-1C, seconded by Tom. Ayes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned, folks, thank you.